Okay. That's it? Well, let's move on then. Could we have Joe Garkovich of the First Christian Church for the invocation? Would you please rise?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. God of creation, we thank you for another day in which to serve you. We thank you for the moisture you have sent our way, and as always, we pray for more. As we meet tonight to do this important work, we pray for courage, we pray for compassion, we pray for civility in all we say and in all that we do. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you. You can sit down. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor Troutman?
Here.
Council members Smith?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Gill?
Here.
Hammrich?
Here.
Huckaz?
Here.
And Meisner?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens with regard to other items that they put their names in for?
We have received no written request to speak to council that's not an item already on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Could you approve the minutes for the February the 5th regular city council meeting and February the 7th general government meeting? Are there any corrections? Mr. Meisner?
My question is in regards to the general government meeting. And I think, I mean, there's not a whole lot on the 2A project, but it talks about after a must discussion, blah, blah, blah. But the point is, I thought we had the consensus from council that the third-party inspection would be affirmed that was contracted through the city and not through the contractor.
We can do that. We didn't realize there was an affirmative vote, but certainly if that's the will of the council, we'll do that.
I think I remember mentioning that we wanted to find out what costs and things like that would be before we made an official decision.
We can do that. We have plenty of time. Thank you.
Jim, I'll note that in this meeting minutes.
Okay.
Any other corrections? Any note? Can I have a motion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the 2518 regular city council meeting and the 2718 general government committee meeting.
A second?
Second. Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Council member Smith?
Aye.
Council member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council member Huckaz?
Aye.
Council member Meisner?
Aye.
Council member Hammrich?
Aye.
Council member Gill?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Are there any council member announcements at this time? Mr. Meisner?
This is your meeting, but at the vision committee meeting this Wednesday, we're going to have some representatives from the Division of Wildlife here to talk about, and I want to reiterate, talk about a possible harvest program for deer in Canyon City. And that's all it is, is they're going to present us with some more information with a initial plan in terms of what that would potentially look like, and then we just need to decide where we go from there. So that's this Wednesday. If you have interest in that, for, against, or whatever, that meeting's at 4:00.
Okay. Mr. Hammrich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like a brief update on the Tech Start group that is working under FEDC. They are about to be appointed or designated, one of two statewide technology sector designations. There's one, they're about to be appointed, the second one in the state. That opens the door for an awful lot of things. I've been attending those meetings. Mr. Mayor, they're about to light on fire over there. It's going to be great for our community. It's really, it's really exciting to listen to some of the things that are going on.
What's the address over there?
It's right on the corner of Fourth, I believe. So it's above the old, there was the old tool store there. It's the second floor, right there on the corner of Fourth, I believe.
Fourth and Main.
Fourth and Main.
Mm-hmm.
So any old timers out here, where Monroe's Gifts was? Remember that?
Monroe's.
It's upstairs, Monroe's. Remember that? Okay. Also, I'm going to attend the council government meeting as your representative on Wednesday. It is a half-day meeting, and it will be held this time in Canyon City at Head Start, and I will be there. Any other announcements?
Mark?
Mark?
There's a planning commission meeting here on the 28th, which is a week from Wednesday. It's here at City Hall at 6:00.
Anyone else? No? Okay. We have the administrator review the consent agenda items, please.
Mayor and city council, 5A would be appointment of John Hammrich as the alternative director to the combined regional communications authority. 5B would appoint Sherry Robert and Liz Babla to the library museum advisory board. There is also necessity to appoint a city council rep since that was a position that Kathy Schumacher held. I don't know if you want to do that later in the meeting or part of this. Under our bid, 18-18 would be approval of a bid for 2018 Chevy pickup for the water department. That's with Dahlmbach Motors for the amount of $26,167. That's a state contractor, so it's pretty difficult to compete against someone winning the state bid. 22-18 would be approval award of another 2018 Chevy pickup for the parks department, again to Dahlmbach Motors in the same amount of $26,167. 24-18 is award for the Centennial Park lighting equipment. Part is to face two improvements to the park, to Blazer Electric Supplies, not to exceed $10,700. We had three bidders for that. 25-18 would be award bid to the parks department, Centennial Park, for topsoil to avalanche excavating, a local company, in amount not to exceed $32,000. We had four bidders at, it's always good to see a local vendor succeed. And then 29.18 would be award for sole source, 60 water meters and 105 registers for the water department to finish line systems in the amount of $36,294.75. As you well know, we have standardized our equipment in the water department, so it's radio frequency red, so that's why it's a sole source.
Okay.
Tony, was Linder invited to bid on this?
Yeah, they did bid on it. They were a couple grand above. They did just, as you well recall at the last meeting, get awarded the purchase of a used vehicle for the police department, so they've been good about bidding for these opportunities. But again, it's hard when you have a statewide contractor, in this case it's Dahlmbach out of Fort Collins, to compete with because their prices are extremely low. So they work off of volume. So when just bidding...
No, I understand that. But the state bid usually is a, there's a flat blanket, like a GSA bid, is that correct or incorrect?
I'm not...
I mean, like with the equipment that I sell, if we do a state bid, the state bid has a set price, and it's just a little unclear to me if a Chevrolet dealer can participate in that. They should be offered the same pricing as somebody that's not in our community. And I'm just, what I'd like to see, and you know, where I'm going with this is, you know, Linder is a local merchant, the money stays here in town, except for what goes to GM for the car.
Sure, sure.
So like I said, I just, I'm not real sure how that state bid works. If there's a GSA number, you know, GSA contract or pricing on that, it should be a flat price, and I'm a little unclear on that.
Yeah.
But I don't need to be clear, as long as they were allowed to bid...
Yeah, they did bid. As you know, that we provide, like charter a 5% local preference.
Correct.
Unfortunately, the price differential was 9.1%, so...
Okay.
Had they been within the 5%, it would have been awarded to Linder.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The memo shows 9.1% higher.
Excuse me?
The memo shows 9.1% higher.
Yes.
Right, but they were allowed at 5%.
Yes. So they were 4.1% over what our allowance would have provided. But again, it's encouraging, they've won recent bids, so they've been showing their competitiveness by bidding on almost everything we put out. So we appreciate that.
Well, it just concerns me or bothers me that we're sending the money out of town, you know, but it's a genuine thing. I mean, we have to do the best with the citizen's money, and 9.1% is...
But ultimately, we have to serve the taxpayers who are paying for this, and we try to get the highest value for the commodity or service we're purchasing, with the exception of, again, the local preference of the 5%.
Thank you.
Any other questions or corrections? Okay, let's go back up to the appointment. Ms. Gonzalez, would you take that position that we had talked about?
For the library?
Yes.
Yes.
That was easy. Is that okay with everybody?
I would answer.
Because it's a council appointment.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would be honored, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Now...
She's going to the library board?
The library board. So I'll need a motion in a second on the consent agenda. Mr. Huckaz?
Mayor and members, council, I make a motion that we adopt the, pass the adoption of the agenda and consent agenda with the adding of Dolly with regards to the library board.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hammrich? Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Council member Huckaz?
Aye.
Council member Hammrich?
Aye.
Council member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council member Smith?
Aye.
Council member Meisner?
Aye.
Council member Gill?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Could we, the administrators' report, do you have any report?
I can reserve my time for later on. We talked about stormwater fees. The only thing I would request that we pull item number 12 of, we need to make further revisions to that proposed ordinance for clarity, and so we'd like to bring that back to you on March the 5th.
Okay. Is that okay with council?
Yes.
Mr. Meisner?
Right, I concur with that, but my request, and I'd like to get a feel for council, is that I would request that staff in that trash ordinance add some verbiage that would allow staff the flexibility to waive that pending the physical capabilities of the resident. Something of that sort.
Yeah, we've talked to Catherine about that. She'll draft language. We concur with you. There should be that type of discretion and that type of waiver, and we'll have that included in the reading.
Would basically allow me in a couple of years still to roll my thing back and forth.
I wasn't going to say anything.
We were thinking now, but...
That's true.
So what you're saying with that is that it would be a case-by-case basis?
Yes.
It would open it up to, okay.
Yes, right.
Yeah, if somebody's clearly disabled or whatever, then variants of...
Yeah. Well, we don't want, we've talked to the council members, rely upon whether it's disability tag from the car, medical marijuana license, social security disability, in, you know, check, doxina. I think the staff has the common sense to know when someone physically can't move something, and they'll use their appropriate discretion. But we don't want to get into a bunch of paperwork, people having to prove up something they can't do. We don't want to go through that.
That's out of sacri?
Yeah.
Could we have to see that when it comes out?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go ahead and, let's move the public hearings for the transfer of liquor licenses and premises licenses up, so get those out of the way. They're pretty quick to do, which hopefully the next time we won't have to do this.
Sure.
Is that okay with council? All right, let's go ahead and open the public hearing.
We need a proof agenda?
Pardon?
We need a proof agenda? We did approve it.
We did approve it.
We did. So item number nine?
Yeah, it's going to item number nine. And I'm going to open the public hearing, and could we have a report from city clerk, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Gabriel and Dennis, this is Gabriel Gardner and Dennis Dircksey representing Pester Marketing, who has filed for an application to transfer a 3.2 beer off premise license held by Western Convenience Store. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting that location. Pester Marketing plans to operate the establishment as been done in the past with no significant changes. The local manager and employees will be required to attend upcoming training sessions offered by the state and city. A temporary license has been issued with no pending oppositions or concerns. Upon review of the application, the state and city forms and fees have been submitted. The diagram meets the requirements of application. The applicant has possession of the premises through a management agreement and lease, and the applicant holds a valid sales six license. So with that, I'd open it up to any questions you may have of either of these folks.
Any questions from the applicants in council? Mr. Meisner?
Sure. Read back to this one?
Yes.
Transfer... Okay. Welcome, gentlemen. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes.
Is there a copy of the liquor code on file with your organization?
Yes, there is.
That can't be right. How many employees do you expect to have?
We have six employees at our location.
How will they be trained on the liquor code and liquor laws?
I'll let Gabriel talk to the training part of it. Sure. All of our employees are required to go through a four-to-six-hour computer-based training. It's called Techniques of Alcohol Management, and it's sponsored by NACS, the National Association of Convenience Stores. We also follow through with our employees with monthly, almost mystery shops. We use a bars program where we test all of our employees, and depending on their performance, they're either rewarded, or if they don't meet the criteria, they have to go back through computer-based training.
Okay. Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code, and that any violations of this code may be held against you and your business and result in suspension or recavation of your liquor license?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments from the audience? Any none? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion in a second from council. Mr. Meisner?
Mayor and council, I move that we approve the application for a transfer of ownership of a 3.2 beer retail license at 1228 Royal Gorge Boulevard from Western Convenience Store Incorporated to Pester Marketing Company.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Council member Meisner?
Aye.
Council member Huckaz?
Aye.
Council member Gill?
Aye.
Council member Hammrich?
Aye.
Council member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council member Smith?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thanks again for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen, and welcome to town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go on to item number 10. It's a public hearing for modification of premises of a liquor license for 1208 South Ninth Street. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have a report from the city clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Donovan Baggett, representing the LSE, who has applied to this council for a modification of premises, permit to a temporary increase of license premises. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting the premises. Pursuant to the municipal code, a public hearing is required for any increase in size or capacity of the licensed premises. This temporary increase is being requested to add a portion of the parking lot for Blossom Festival weekend beginning May 4th and ending on May 6th. Mr. Baggett has been advised as to the need for additional parking, and he is acquiring permission, and has acquired currently, from Katie Martin from Touch of Love, to be allowed to use her parking lot for the overflow parking lot and crossing Ninth Street as a safety measure due to the added traffic on Ninth Street to do to those coming and going from the carnival. In 2017, Mr. Baggett applied for and was granted a modification of the same proposed event. During an onsite inspections and visits on both Friday and Saturday last year, I was apprised of only one concern, which was one neighboring business that was not aware of the specific details of that event. I've been brought, I have brought this attention to the applicant, and he plans to better inform those impacted by this event. As evidence, the support of the proposed change relative to the needs of the neighborhood and desires of the adult inhabitants, applicant has submitted a petition bearing 104 signatures representing 68 from inside the city limits and 34 outside city limits and two that's been undetermined. Upon reviewing the application, the appropriate fees have been submitted, the new diagram of the premises meets filing requirements, and with that, I'd open it up to any questions you may have of the applicant or myself.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Mr. Gill? No?
I was twiddling my pen, sir.
Oh, you were twiddling your pen?
Yes.
Okay, so moved.
I think that counts as him asking the questions.
Are you going to ask the questions then? Would you please do that?
Sure.
You have it in front of you.
What sheet is that?
Your renewal.
There, let me have it. Okay, welcome back again. I'm sorry to see that you guys closed down for a bit, but...
Yeah, for about six weeks, but got back up and running on December 9th, so...
There you go. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes, sir.
Is there a copy of the liquor code on file with your establishment?
Yes, sir.
How many employees do you have?
Currently 10, and then on Blossom Weekend, there's an additional two to four for bar staff, and then there's, I think last year we did eight security, so...
Okay. Are these folks trained in the liquor code and the liquor laws?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How do you do that?
Well, a lot of them are actually old staff of mine when we had the bar in West Cliff, so they are already tip certified through the bars and restaurants. They work there.
Okay.
So they have their training already on file, so, and last year for security, most people we employed were either Colorado Department of Corrections or Federal Bureau of Prisons and private security services here in Canyon City.
Okay. Are you fully aware that you're responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code, and any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your business and result in suspension and/or revocation of your liquor license?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Donovan, thank you for being here tonight. I was just curious how the event went for you last year. That was the first time you did that.
It went really well. I mean, we had, I think, 225 on Friday night, and we had right around 3:30 on Saturday night. Through the whole weekend, we had one person, we had to cut off on Friday, and we called him a cab and got him and his wife home, and we had no other incidents throughout the whole weekend. So it was pretty successful, as far as I can tell. We had no, as I said, no disorderly and no kind of fights, no disturbances. The neighbors actually came and joined the concert and had a blast, so I think it went well for everybody involved.
And how did it go with crossing the street?
Most of it was pretty, my security. I had a couple that just maintained the park line. If you had a large crossing, you know, we would just stop traffic briefly, have them cross safely. But really, at when the time, when the concert really got started, there wasn't too much of an issue with it. I think we only had to do it probably three or four times.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the audience? Any comments? None? Going to go ahead and close the public hearing, ask for a motion in a second. Mr. Gill?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for temporary modification of a hotel liquor license for Somewhere Saloon.
Okay.
Now, second this one.
Okay, Mr. Gill, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Council member Gill?
Aye.
Council member Huckaz?
Aye.
Council member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council member Meisner?
Aye.
Council member Hammrich?
Aye.
Council member Smith?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, let's go back to number seven.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Donovan.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck. Let's go back to number seven. It's an ordinance number two, series 2018. This is a second reading. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number two, series of 2018, and ordinance amending chapter 5.3 of the Canyon City Municipal Code by repealing sections 5.30.010 by repealing and reenacting section 5.03.050, assigning authority to the city clerk regarding special event permits and adding the new section 5.30.080 regarding administrative applications.
Okay, I need a motion and a second from council.
I'm not twiddling my pen.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gill? You may.
Mayor and council...
Can I, before you start, we would need a motion to amend it, since you guys directed staff to amend it, removing those items that you didn't want it to be pertaining.
Okay.
So the motion would have to amend it as redlined.
Okay.
If that's your sole pleasure.
Okay. I'm going to walk through this here just a second. Mayor and council, I recommend that we adopt ordinance number two, series of 2018, with the redlined amendment, as noted. Is that good enough?
That's the amendment, yes. Yes. You have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Any note? Would you call the roll, please?
Council member Gill?
Aye.
Council member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council member Hammrich?
Aye.
Council member Meisner?
Aye.
Council member Huckaz?
Aye.
Council member Smith?
Aye.
Approved by a majority vote.
Okay, let's go on to number eight. This is an ordinance number six, a series 2018. This is the stormwater fee ordinance, increasing the stormwater fees. This is a second reading. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number six, series of 2018, and ordinance increasing the base rate used to calculate stormwater management fees chargeable by the city's stormwater utility enterprise and amending chapter 13.10 of the Canyon City Municipal Code concerning stormwater impact fees.
Okay. Now, should we have a discussion at council whether we want to table this or go on and listen to public comment?
Public comment.
Okay, let's do that. Public comment.
I have, I have one that has turned in a request to speak. That's Dan Brixie, 300 Cottonwood. Dan?
Three minutes, do you want to say three minutes in the week?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dan Brixie.
I live at 300 Cottonwood. Can you hear me, Kathy? Not really. Okay? How's that? All right. My name's Dan Bricksy. I live at 300 Cottonwood in Canyon City. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and, uh, certainly I would like to speak on the stormwater fees and, uh, what the proposal is before you. Before I do that, I'd like to take you on a little history trip. August 12th, 1991, uh, I was living on Cottonwood Avenue, and my daughter, I had in a rental complex up the road, and, uh, my daughter was living there. And she calls me and she says, "Dad, I'm, I'm being flooded out." I walked out the door, looked up the street, and I actually saw a wall of water coming down the road, and I was, I've never witnessed anything like that in my life, uh, and I'd lived there for 35 years. And so, uh, I was, I was kinda taken back by the amount of water that I saw coming down the road. August 12th, 1992, exactly one year to the date later, we had a very similar event, and much of the stormwater coming down the road was flooding the neighborhood, uh, getting into people's crawl spaces, creating a significant amount of damage. Um, it was in 2004, or 2007, I believe, Adam. Uh, you can be the one that corrects me on the date, but I believe that the Stormwater Enterprise was enacted, and, uh, from that time forward, I have seen a significant increase of betterment for stormwater events happening within our community. Uh, so the stormwater, I believe, is a necessary utility. I think that it's something that we need in our community. I don't, however, believe that stormwater starts within city limits, nor does it end within city limits. Uh, I never have, and I never will, and I think that we need to have more players paying into that fund. Uh, I think a 100% increase on the fees is, uh, more than, uh, significant. It's, it's, it's a tremendous amount of increase. Uh, we have a lot of people in our community who live on fixed incomes. Uh, I know from my personal experience, I pay more into the stormwater fee than I do for water bills. Uh, I live on the hydraulic ditch. I have hydraulic ditch water, and I pump my water, and so, uh, my city water bill is not very much, but my, my stormwater fees are, are pretty expensive. I pay about, right now, I'm, just got my bill for this month, and, uh, I'm paying about $14 a month. So, uh, with your proposed increase, that would go to $28 a month, about $330 a year into that fund. And I don't mind paying my stormwater fees. I really don't. I want you to understand that. But I do believe that 100% increase is asking too much, particularly given the fact that it just hasn't been that long ago that we gave a forgiveness of water debt to, uh, a person who's not even a resident of our community. And, uh, then ironically, we turn around and we want to charge our resident a 100% increase in their stormwater fees. I know they're different funds, but money is money. And, uh, when we're giving away $200,000, doesn't seem fair to go to the taxpayer and ask the resident to come up with more money, to pony up more money, to fund, uh, a shortfall within the city's requirements for stormwater assessment. So, uh, that said, I would request that, uh, this council, uh, and I appreciate each of you, and I know what it's like to sit there, but I, I would request that you would table this, that you would send it back to committee, that we would look at some kind of coalition that we can either form with the county, or those users who are serviced by our city water department that receive water, somebody that, uh, some mechanism that we can get more users and broadbase that cost, so that we're not writing this all on the back of the city resident. I think that's unfair. And, uh, they benefit, and so I think all beneficiaries should be a participant in paying for this. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Just go ahead. Just a minute, Mr. Dan?
Can I answer some of your questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I would just like to let you know that we actually have, um, started a coalition. We have a stormwater task force. We've been meeting for quite a while and been making a lot of significant strides and progress towards working together with the county and the ditch company to alleviate stormwater problems and hopefully find solutions together to mitigate it. That is something that we are, um, currently working on. Um, and as a matter of fact, have pulled money together to, and to get state funding to do an analysis study for the ditch company. Um, you mentioned that you're a member of the Hydraulic Ditch Company, and I don't know if you're aware, but at the recent stockholder meeting, the stockholders have voted to increase your fees by a couple of dollars per share in order to pay attorney fees to potentially sue the city for their, um, stormwater flooding into their ditches. And so, um, as we're proceeding in our conversation, as far as the $280,000, I want to make it clear that nobody is paying Kevin Quinn at the golf course. He is not getting a cent of that money personally as, as an individual. It is, um, and it is an economic development tool to invest in future development in the four-mile district out there versus our stormwater has currently a $75 million bill to pay for stormwater infrastructure needs. So there, there are some pretty big differences. I just wanted to make some of those clarifications as we move forward in our conversations. And most importantly, I want to thank you for being here tonight and for the comments that you have to make. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And we, and we listen to it very carefully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Went down here. Dan, I appreciate what you said, excuse me, with the fact that it doesn't start in the city, it doesn't end in the city, and as you know from your previous experience on council, it is very, very tough to get the county to come along and play with some of these things that would make improvements for everybody. You know, we're doing our best that we can within there, but to get the county to come to the table and, and help resolve some of this is a difficult task.
I understand it.
Thank you, Dan.
I wonder sometimes, though, if we lose our focus a little bit with our stormwater. Uh, I mean, you're, you're engaging me, so I'm, I'm gonna engage you just a little bit, and wonder if we've lost our focus a little bit of why we initially started the Stormwater Enterprise, and it was to stop the flooding. And, uh, I think sometimes we're more concerned about the type of water that comes off of the ground rather than that the water is coming off of the ground. Uh, I'm, I believe in cleaning our environment. I believe in Clean Water Act to a point. I think federal mandates can be onerous. I think the way that we as a city administer those can be onerous on, on the, on the recipients of those sometimes. And I, I worry that, uh, maybe we spend funds that could be better utilized in, uh, infrastructure for our capital improvements. And, uh, I don't know how much we're spending on capital improvements this year, um, but that's, that's where the money needs to go. And I, I understand the, the Clean Water Act, and I understand, uh, federal mandates, but I, I worry sometimes that we lose our focus, and we're worried more about compliance with that than we are with what we're originally, we're intending to do. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
What? Comment?
A comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd make a comment, because I've been sitting on both sides of the equation while this stormwater discussion has been going on over the last year or so and longer, and, and I think that one of the, one of the important things to realize is that the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, as, as I understand it right now, as it's structured, is, is not in the black. And so, in essence, we're taking taxpayer money to fund the Stormwater Enterprise repairs and operations as needed. And because of that, and because that previous councils have, have not, uh, addressed this, this problem, this problem over the years, we are faced, just to get the Stormwater Fund into the black, not even talking about capital improvements, but just into the black, it's, it requires this doubling. Uh, the, there, and as, uh, Councilwoman Smith mentioned, there is, over that, there's a $75 million capital improvement program that needs to be undertaken and accomplished in, in some type of timeframe here, but all this does is bring the Stormwater Enterprise Fund into the black.
Okay. Next. Who's next? Is that Mr. Sturica? Could you have your name and address?
No. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Mike Sturica. I live at 676 North 19th Street, own businesses at 1217 Royal Gorge Boulevard and 605 South 9th. Want to thank mayor, members of council, city staff for this opportunity to speak. Let me first say that this is the first council meeting I've attended since January of 1994, when I left council after serving eight years. Um, there are two reasons for that. First, up until recently, I thought the council was doing a fairly decent job, and secondly, uh, the last time I did speak up against something the council was doing, it cost me income at my businesses. So I've just sit, pretty much sat on the side and been, been quiet up until this time. Just couldn't control myself tonight. The proposed increase for stormwater fee, I believe, is unnecessary. Your budget shows a current income of over $805,000 into this fund annually. Out of these funds, only $190,000 is directly being spent for any type of, uh, improvements. There is no capital outlay in the budget for this year. There's also a fee of $620,600, which I read on your handout today, is going to a consultant for some type of a discharge device or, or certificate or something. Something that, is what Dan addressed, is federal regulations. Um, I believe the majority of the $190,000 is being spent to a local company or a contractor that you were awarded bid to that goes out and cleans these drainage ways every year. Uh, one of those drainage ways is, is behind my business on South 9th Street. Uh, every year after the contractor's left, and I have to contact the city because that contractor hasn't done their job properly. They've mowed the weeds, they haven't collected them, they end up in the ditch, they plug, they plug the, the grate that is at that entrance where it goes under, uh, South 9th Street and under the surgery center directly to the river. Last year, I observed that they removed that grate while they were mowing, raked stuff into the ditch, and let it discharge directly into the river, which I know is against the, the, the federal EPA regulations. Uh, I also have to call them after the first rainstorm. I have to call city to say, "Hey, that grate's plugged. If we get another rainstorm, it's going over the highway, it's gonna cause damage to the highway." Uh, they also leave, the contractor also has left debris on my lot, which I've had to call city staff about, and more, more times than not, it's city crews that come out and take care of these problems, especially the grate that's in the ditch. It take, it requires a backhoe to end up cleaning it out. Other, other ditches that they clean is the WPA ditch. There isn't those types of, of grading structures on those ditches. That ditch ends up going underground for a long period of time, makes a couple of 90-degree bends in the big R in City Market Parking Lot. That debris's getting in that ditch and, and ends up plugging it and reduces the flow. Um, I was on council late 80s. There's a stormwater management plan that should be on file. At that time, the Cadillac Plan was $20 million. S- city council has not done anything since that to speak of, to make major improvements. That's why it's $75 million now. Um, and I agree with Dan that, and that, that study in the late 80s also gives the percentage amount. I couldn't find my copy of it, but the, a large majority of the problems caused is outside of the city limits, especially to the north. And a, a stormwater utility, whatever it needs to be, needs to be formed. I think if you went to the voters of the, to get that approved, the city residents are definitely gonna go for it because they realize it's now gonna be spread, the costs are gonna be spread out by everybody that's causing the problems. Again, I'd like to, uh, thank you for the time to, to speak, and I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mike.
Um, yeah, it sounds like you have frequent frustrations every time it rains, Mr. Water?
Well, every summer, after they clean that ditch behind my car wash on South 9th, there's a problem, whether it's debris left in my parking lot, whether the ditch just isn't getting cleaned up, and like to say, the, and it, for some reason, it happens usually within a week after they've left, and nobody from city staff has come out to make sure that they've done the job correctly.
So I feel like you're maybe confirming that there is a serious problem with stormwater.
There is a problem. Yeah, but, uh, the increase I don't agree with. I think it needs to be spread out.
Okay. And I've heard your, you know, problems that you have and Dan's problems that you have, I just, and I'd just like to say that it doesn't matter which meeting I go to in the city, I hear from residents in the north, south, east, and west, all incredibly frustrated and angry because they too are experiencing similar frustrations, or if not even worse because their property is being flooded. Um, I like your comments that when you were in city council, it was $20 million to get the Cadillac program to fix the stormwater, and nothing was done, and now it's $75 million. Um, what is your suggestion if we keep putting off, continue putting it off, and that $75 million again gets doubled?
I don't, I don't suggest that you put it off. I suggest that you expand the base of your revenue, increase your revenue by increasing that area that's covered, uh, especially that area to the north. The people in South Canyon, south of the river, have very little or minor flooding ditch problems unless one of the ditches fails. Uh, the, the residents that are city residents in Lincoln Park have absolutely no benefit from this fee. There's absolute, there's no, no flooding that occurs in, in those areas of Lincoln Park, but they're paying it. Uh, the people that are affected are basically north of the river, and especially, like to say, there's a large portion of that problem that occurs north of the city limits.
So I think we'll probably talk a little bit more about that in the future, but Adam, I was wondering if you could take a moment to address the spending expenditures in the Enterprise Fund for the stormwater, because it seemed like there's some questions about how that money is being spent and where it's going.
Well, the, the majority of it's spent on maintenance, um, and then there's a good chunk of it that's spent on compliance with our MS4 permit. Uh, but as Mr. Sturica mentioned, we have a chunk of money we, we use to pay a local contractor to do maintenance, and then we also have our inter, uh, inter-fund transfer that we do, um, where we use the street crews to do a lot of the maintenance and cleaning as well. And that's a fairly significant amount of, of money in that inter-fund transfer. But we, and he's also right that we don't currently have any capital planned for this year due to the funding.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you again for being here.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions of Mr. Sturica? Okay. Anybody else like to come and address? Is there any written? Dennis Weed?
I have one more written across this week.
Um, Mr. Weed, you, you signed up. Do you want to go now, and then we'll give Mr. Linder and who else wanted to talk? Turner?
Aye. Uh, Dennis Weed, 1375 Rudd. Um, like everyone else said, thanks for the opportunity to talk to you. Um, I, the first thing I'll say is, uh, I agree with Dan Bricksy's comments that I think we sort of lost focus on what we're doing with the stormwater fees, and we, I was on council when that stormwater fee was first instituted, and the object was to build up basically a war chest to address stormwater problems, not day-to-day stuff, but the actual stormwater problems, and that fund is being diverted now into day-to-day, uh, operations, a lot of which I would characterize as maintenance and not really stormwater. I mean, one of the things I've heard is every time it rains in Dawson Ranch, they gotta go up and clean the roads. Yep, well, guess what? They had to do that back then, too. Um, and I know that 100% of our street sweeper is being charged with stormwater fund. That's, that's, uh, something that started recently. Um, Canyon City's been sweeping streets forever, and we weren't doing it because of MS4 or because of water quality or because of anything else. We were doing it to keep the city looking nice, and now that has been entirely passed off to the stormwater fund, and I think that's inappropriate, just like, um, 20% of the 14 people who, or 20% of the time of the 14 people in the Streets Department are charged to the stormwater fund. That's 14 people working one day a week, 52 weeks a year on nothing but stormwater, and I find that really hard to believe. But, um, I guess my main focus here is, obviously, I would like you to table this until we can come up with a better solution. Uh, two, Mike and Dan are correct. This problem does not start and end in Canyon City. It's a much bigger problem, and that 80% of the drainage basin is outside of the city limits, and that's, you know, rain isn't a problem. Storms are a problem. It's a, 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 a light rain gets absorbed everywhere. When it pours, the water doesn't absorb. It comes roaring into town from, uh, from in the county. And, you know, and it's, you know, it's, we're talking about getting the county on board here. Well, the county doesn't have a really good track record of getting on board with the city issues. Uh, I mean, and, uh, I, I think, uh, unloading this fee on the residents of the city is sending a message to the county commissioners saying, "You know what? We'll just take it again. We'll keep taking it. We'll keep footing the bills and, uh, you know, we're not gonna be responsible for it." But I, I don't know that the county commissioners realize that they're elected by the people in Canyon City, until the people in Canyon City get it clearly in their head that if the county commissioners don't get on board and keep sticking us with the bill, then we need to get some new county commissioners. But, um, so, but really, thi- this is so unfair to businesses, this doubling this fee. I mean, I have said for a long time, we gotta figure a better way to do this than just nailing the businesses. The businesses, I mean, Canyon City runs on sales tax. 62% of our total $11.2 million budget is sales and use tax, which is sales tax. And so it's, and that comes from the businesses located within Canyon City. Um, so, and it's also, there's, there's 1,000 business properties in town. There's 5,000 residential properties, but those 1,000 businesses pay 52% of the total stormwater fee. Um, it's, um, you know, and then the, another issue that comes up, and I, personally, I think this should be totally eliminated because I, I think it's just unjust, and the new proposal is like out of this world crazy, but this stormwater impact fee. Uh, in theory, you're buying into a pre-existing system. It's not like, uh, the, the Water Enterprise where you're paying a tap fee to tap into this great infrastructure that's there. Truthfully, there is no infrastructure in the stormwater system right now, and to, to be paying a fee to tap into that, I think is just a little bit over the top. Now, currently, the, the stormwater impact fee is $750 per acre of development. So the average house in town, uh, probably is somewhere around a fifth of an acre. Their stormwater impact fee on new develop, on a new house is somewhere between $150, $200 typical, uh, okay? I don't know if you've read this real carefully, but there's a proposal in, in this ordinance to increase that stormwater impact fee not to a per-acre charge, but to a square foot charge of impervious surface, and the rate is .2469 cents per square foot. That's gonna raise the impact fee for building an average house of 3,600 square feet impervious surface to over $900. And where, where this really gets out of control is businesses, which are the lifeblood of this community, because they generate the sales tax that makes this city run. And if we... And if we wanna get new businesses in here, the very last thing you wanna do is just, quite frankly, screw 'em over on, uh, this, uh, impact fee. So, a, a new business, uh, businesses need parking, and they're required to have paved parking. So that's an obligation. It's an expense, and then you get the impact fee, which is a slap in the face, and then as a compliment to the slap in the face, for the rest of your life, you get to pay a monthly stormwater fee. Now, with this new impact fee, businesses tend to pretty much pave their entire surface because they need it for parking. So that stormwater impact fee is gonna go from seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars per acre to almost eleven-thousand dollars an acre, and that is the most egregious anti-business, get businesses in town, things that's happened here, I think, since I was told twenty-five years ago to pack my business up and move it out of town if I didn't want to deal with city regulations. So I, I think what's important here is put this aside, come up with a better solution, and it's time to get the county on board. And, uh, heck, I got a whole bunch more stuff, but I'm way over it, so, thanks.
Thanks, Dennis. You're absolutely right. You know, we, the, the people of Canyon City have gotta get with their representatives because we are in Fremont County, and sometimes that's overlooked, and I agree with you. The drainage basins are in the county, and that's who us, should be helping us pay for this. Mr. Gill?
In agreement with you, just a, an odd little number here. On a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, Canyon City gets forty-six dollars of your property taxes. The county gets roughly a hundred-and-forty? A hundred-and-forty to a hundred-and-sixty dollars of that? I mean, to call the, I, I, I'm not too far off, I don't believe.
County would get a hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars?
A hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars out of your property taxes as a Canyon City resident, and the city gets about forty-seven dollars. What this means is that we are Fremont County citizens, too. When it comes to a situation that's a county-city problem, um, I feel that we need to contact our county commissioners. We're trying to put together an, an enterprise for the stormwater, or a, I'm sorry, to, to encompass people that are causing the problem so that we could come to the table and say, okay, we've got this many players now, and this is what the fee needs to be to, to actually accomplish something that's been kicked down the can, that's been kicked down the road for over fifty years. So I would urge everybody to get with your county commissioners because there's fifteen-thousand people roughly in Canyon City. We all, all of the people who own homes pay property taxes. The county gets a majority of that. They are somewhat unwilling in most cases to try to augment anything that the city does for Fremont County residents. I think that's wrong. With so much money going to the county and their inability or their, uh, lack of interest in, in, in promoting a, a better lifestyle or a better environment for the city of Canyon City, I think that's absolutely wrong. As far as this stormwater fee goes, right now, we're looking at making a district that will include part of the county, everybody that's a problem, or everybody that adds to it, and that's gonna increase the number of people that will be kicking the ante for the stormwater fund. So it's my recommendation, or my thought, that we put this off until we find out if we can get everybody on board to make this district, find out how many people are involved, how much money it's gonna take, which I understand there's a study going on at this point. Am I correct?
Yes, yes.
So I think that anything that we did stormwater, yes, it needs to be addressed. It's been ignored for a half a century. It needs to be done, but I think that right this minute, with what we've got in the works, we're not well enough prepared to say, this is what the dollar amount should be. We need to find out if this is gonna be formed. We need to find out how many citizens are gonna be affected or, or gonna be contributing. We need to get this study done, and we need to find how many people are gonna be there to help pay the bill, my personal opinion.
Yeah, well, if I could, I just add a comment in here. You know, that statutorily, the Fremont County, Fremont County, Fremont County commissioners are required to provide sheriff's service in town, uh, two years ago.
What kind of service? I'm sorry?
The Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
Yes, and two years ago, I think, uh, the residents of Canyon City and Fremont County approved a one-percent sales tax increase to, uh, assist the county in dealing with the, the Sheriff's Department and their obligations there. Now, this is an obligation that they've had since Colorado became a state, or since Fremont County's existed. That's always been there. This one-percent sales tax, I just looked it up today, generates four million dollars a year that no longer has to come out of their general fund to pay for sheriff's services. Yet, the Fremont Ca, so they've got a four-million-dollar pot now that they didn't have before. Yet, as an example, Fremont County can't come up with two-hundred-thousand dollars to contribute to tourism marketing. I, I mean...
And yet, the city does.
The city does, yeah.
Okay, let's not, let's get back on point, okay?
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering, Catherine, would you be able to address Mr. Weed's comments about the equity of businesses and maybe branching it out to residents and making it more equal to everyone and how that pans out legally?
Well, so the calculation that's currently being proposed, um, is a proper calculation for a fee. If you begin to kinda deviate from that, you need to come up with another proper formula. Um, and so if you deviate and you don't come up with a proper formula, it could be deemed a tax, and then it would have to be approved by the citizens pursuant to tabor. So the calculation to see, you know, how much, um, infrastructure is needed, the cost of that infrastructure, and back into a calculation based upon something that can be applied equally to all properties based upon the impervious surface is the appropriate way to calculate a fee in Colorado.
Well, that's one of the ways. Impervious surface is one way to calculate the fee, but that's not the way everybody calculates it. And Colorado Springs has a different model.
But it's still a calculation based upon a formula.
Exactly. But what I'm saying is, we're using a defective formula. We need a better formula.
A different mode of calculation.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Dennis? You've been involved in this whole process, and, and I may be off on some numbers, but if, if I recall, if we were to implement the full size of the district that we had potentially planned in the initial phases, um, I thought that the charge that's, that's about equal to where we were at is where that particular charge would be. Is that about right, Adam? That would, that would enable us to fund the seventy-five million. The point is, if we were to form the district and, and we were to come up with a fee that's very equivalent to the current fee that's being proposed, would you in fact support that then?
Well, I'm not sure I completely understood.
If we, if we developed a full district that we talked about, that encompasses a large portion of the northern part of the county, north of the city limits, once that district is formed, we would then need to establish a rate, and that rate would need to be relative to the amount of, uh, proposed, uh, construction that would need to happen, which we all know has gotta be in that seventy-million-dollar range. If that rate were in that, were in that thirteen dollars that we're now charging, would you then support it?
Uh, well, it's kind of a tricky question, you know? So we got seventy-million dollars worth, give or take, of infrastructure. The question is, are you ever gonna be able to pay for that? And, and I think the answer probably is no. And the analogous situation is, let's look at our street situation. We've got a hundred miles of streets that need repairs. Are we ever gonna fix them? No. Is it possible to tax or to, uh, well, in our case, tax the citizens of Canyon City enough to fix the streets? No, it's not possible. It's a, now, so you pick away at it, but as far as I can tell, the way this stormwater thing is being structured, it's like, we're trying to fund the whole thing. That's not realistic. It's a, you're just not gonna do it.
Well, right now, we're not trying to fund the whole thing. We're just trying to stay in the black, just to do the bare minimum requirements.
I mean, you personally know that, that, that the current fee is not trying to fund seventy-five thousand dollars.
Seventy-five million.
Or million, seventy-five million.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I understand it.
It's only trying to get us into this perceived or real black.
For minimum requirements.
This fee would pay for four million dollars.
Look, I don't care what the numbers are showing. That fund is in the black. It, the problem is, the money's being diverted to administrative uses instead of being used for what it was intended, which was for stormwater improvements. That's where the problem is.
So you implying that we should not be in compliance with MS, MS four permits and put ourselves in...
I'm, I'm, I'll come out and say that maybe the federal government oughta figure out a way to fund it instead of just telling us to do it, uh...
But it didn't work out very well for Colorado Springs.
And, and a, a direct answer to the question is, no, I'm not saying we shouldn't be in compliance with it, but I am saying we don't need to be in complete compliance with it, uh, and we are meeting, uh, I think, the most basic fundamental parts of that, which is this education component of it. In, in terms of the rest of the MS four requirements, I mean, that's part of the seventy-five million. It's a, and, you know, the eight-hundred thousand a year we're getting, that, that's not being used to solve the stormwater problem. That's being used administratively.
Adam?
Okay?
It's, and, and, I mean, the, the whole point in here is, gotta figure out a better way. Gotta need, you need a better formula, and you need more players, but just piling it on to the fifteen-thousand people who live inside that little border on the map is not gonna solve the problem.
So Dennis, I ask, why wasn't this solution found and implemented while you were on council?
It's an excellent question, but I'll, I'll tell ya, putting the burden of the solution on the backs of businesses is the wrong answer. And, I mean, and I'm on both sides of it. I'm, I'm gonna, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, uh, but I'll tell ya, I pay a heck of a lot in stormwater fees, uh, for businesses that, well, let me, yeah, let me give you a good example. I've got a piece of property, uh, it, it's my parking lot for Raph Masters. Twenty percent of that property, I'm forbidden to use because I was forced to build a stormwater retention, no, detention pond, retention, whatever. It's, I, I was forced to build a pond that has no exit. Every drop of water that falls in my parking lot goes into a pond that has nowhere to go except into the ground. So I can't use that twenty percent of my lot because the city, twenty years ago, when they tried to run me out of town, said, okay, they couldn't stop me from building my parking lot, so they did everything they could to make it miserable for me, which is kinda like this new impact fee that you're talking about. I mean, that's insane. Eleven-thousand dollars an acre for a business to come in and pave their, you know, it's, it's crazy.
Okay. It is. You win.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Who wants to talk next? That lady, uh, this lady here, and then we'll talk to Mr. Linder, okay?
My name is Kathy Treheal. I live at twenty-two seventeen Cherry Street in this city. I wanna give you some history. I've lived in that place for about forty-five years now, so I know all the ins and outs of the ditch and the stormwater and everything else. I was on the first stormwater committee back when Steve Thatcher was here and Bob Solomon. They are the ones, we, that's when we did the Orchard Avenue Basin, and I told Bob, I said, Bob, if you have an outlet that big, that water's gonna go into the hydraulic. And I said, it's, it's still gonna flood me. Okay, this is almost twenty years later. I was on that stormwater committee. We did the utility, and my prob, and I'm still getting flooded, so I am, under the crawl space, the whole property. I've tried different things to try to, on my own, to solve the problem. So far, I haven't solved it. So anyhow, this week, the city decided, the street department decided to, um, we have a, just like this, Kitty Corner, with, the ditch on Orchard goes across the street, Kitty Corner to the other ditch. So I said, okay. I said, they're all out there, they're working on it, and I said, I'd like a bigger pipe, I said, because you're putting in a twelve-inch pipe. Now, you know the water coming down into the hydraulic is what? I don't know how big that pipe is, I've never measured it, but it's big. And I'm getting a twelve-inch pipe to go across the street to drain all the water off, and it, you know, it holds the irrigation ditch water, too. So my question is, it's been a long time, and I can't, I can't get any help to solve the problem. So of course, I feel frustrated. I mean, wouldn't you? If you were on a stormwater committee all those years ago, and the, and nothing's been done except the Orchard Avenue Basin, and you've paid in, you're, you know, you've helped get the stormwater utility going, and, uh, then it's not used to help you personally, then wouldn't you feel frustrated, too? I mean, I don't mind the fees going up as long as I see some benefit. So I just wanted to tell you that, you know, this is an individual problem, too, for people. I mean, we're all, like Dan said, he's lived there a long time, and when the water comes down, I mean, it's, it's everywhere. So, um, I just want you to take in to consideration that it's a personal problem, too, for some of us, and we'd like to see it solved. Like I said, I've tried to solve it myself, but when, when the pipe's put in and it's a twelve-inch pipe, and you, you ask the person that's in charge of it if they'll put in a bigger pipe, and they refuse because of utilities, the gas pipe, which I, I saw the hole, so I know there was room for a bigger pipe, but, um, there's gotta be some way to drain the water off. I mean, it takes a long time to drain off. So, um, I'd just ask for your help if you wanna know the truth, that, that you consider that some of us have been waiting a long time for some help with this flooding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treheal. Mr. Linder, would you like to approach?
Good evening. My name's Steve Linder. I live at, uh, seven-fifty-nine Apache Drive, uh, here in Canyon City, and I think stormwater is a problem. I, I don't, I don't think anybody would really deny that. I have two businesses in Canyon City. One is Carriage Wash and Vak. One of them is Linder Chevrolet, and, um, our storm wa, runoff charges right now are like thirty-one, twenty-nine a year for both businesses. So you take that times two, that doubles to about sixty-two-hundred dollars a year. What would you think if I said, we've got a car for fifteen thousand, and tomorrow it's gonna be thirty? It's kinda the same response that I took when I heard of the responses, although it's different subjects, but, um, I agree with the citizens here on, on what they've said. I think, I think stormwater starts north and west of here, and I think that before there's any decision made, I think those players need to come to the table and be involved in this, and I really think that they need to participate in the subject of paying the bill. It is a problem. It, it's a problem for the ditches here in town, uh, when some of the storm runoff runs into the ditches, and then therefore the grease and the oil and that type of thing runs into fields and so forth, uh, that are growing food and that type of thing, and, and, um, uh, we're involved in, in something down south, and I really don't wanna see it in that particular water either. And it, it's a problem, and it's something that we can all solve, but, um, I don't like to see a hundred-percent increase in my storm runoff when I'm already paying thirty-one-hundred and it goes to sixty-two-hundred. I think that's excessive. That's all I have. Anybody have any questions for me? That's just my opinion. That's just my opinion.
How's the project coming?
Great. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Who's next? Mr. Baney.
I'm not really good at speaking, but I'm just gonna make one point. I live on, my name's Guy Baney. I live at 1627 Central, and the WPA ditch goes to the west of me through the radio station and up down, and it comes down across to Oddfellows and on down. Funniest thing about this ditch, it's pretty big up there where I am at. The road at Central kind of blocks it off. I get a little floodwater, I'm in the floodwater district. But as you go on down, that ditch gets smaller and smaller. Does that make any sense? It gets smaller and smaller. And so the city, yeah, the county's got a lot of water that comes down through here, but the city's choked it off. And that's created a lot of the problems of the flooding is those stormwater areas have not been taken care of properly in the past, and it's created a problem we've got now because, look at every one of those ditches. The WP, WPA ditch, well, it used to be one, I understand, goes down Ninth Street. Guess what? They crossed it over there below Lenders Field and put it in the WPA ditch that runs by my property. So the city isn't innocent in this, all of, all of it, and the county isn't one of the main problems. The problem is, it's never been designed properly to run the water to the river. It's been choked off. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Who's next? Mr. Reynolds?
I'm David Reynolds. I live at 167, 1677 Grand Avenue, which is in the county, but I own a couple of buildings in Canyon City that do have previous services, and so I do have a dog in this hunt. The, the, one thing I want to add to what Dennis had said or reinforce was that I'm wondering about how the numbers are derived in the actual costs of, of the stormwater detention, or the stormwater fund. I say that because I remember 10 years ago, the conversation, when the storm was first introduced to that, they was gonna raise around six to eight hundred thousand dollars. At that time, they didn't know exactly how much service was gonna be. This, and I can't remember who I had the conversation with, but it was somebody proposing this, said that they thought that the city was already spending some money on stormwater cleanup, but it wasn't enough. There, there were still ditches that were clogging. And out of the 600, out of the eight, roughly 800,000 they thought they would get, they expected to use about 200,000 of that for additional cleanup, in addition to what they, the city was already spending. And then the 600,000 is gonna go into fund, into a fund for capital improvements. I haven't really tracked what's going on in the last 10 years, but now I look and see that according to this, you're spending 900 and some thousand dollars on stormwater cleanup existing, because I see 337,000 plus the 620,000, which is transferred to the funds. I can't believe the city's actually spending 900,000 dollars to clean up, for stormwater cleanup, and, and keep in the ditches clean and open. To me, it's, it sounds like there's some cost shifting going on, trying to fund other things with the stormwater funds, because the stormwater funds are something that you can increase, don't have to go to the taxes, to the citizens for tax increase. So I would encourage city council members to take a hard look at the numbers. Talk to Harry, he's a good man with numbers. Find out where the 620,000 dollars is going to. Does it really go for stormwater cleanup, or is it part of Harry's salary to keep, keep him here and happy and...
Harry, you're good with numbers. Can you explain how these, can you go into more depth about these funds?
They're part of the cost allocation plan where city services and cities facilities use for stormwater purpose. So there is indirect costs allocated into the stormwater.
So if the, if the increase goes up, then the allocation is gonna go up? And you don't show that, but is that what's gonna happen?
Yeah, and that's why we have hired independent consultant to confirm this number. And really, that consultant is working currently, and they will be giving us their result within, within a few weeks.
So he's gonna look and see if this 600,000 dollar...
Correct. How fair that number is.
Okay. What I'm, I guess what I want to say is that the original stormwater fund was proposed as to spend money for stormwater cleanup, not to spend, fund other deposit, other departments. And I'm fine with that. I, I agree, the stormwater has to be done. I don't think my buildings produce enough stormwater to pay for it, but I understand a lot of people are having stormwater issues, and so I agree with the stormwater fund. I would, I'm okay with an increase. I don't, doubling seems a bit rich, particularly when I look at the 620,000, which was never brought up 20 years, or 10 years ago when we first did it. It wasn't even mentioned. So I thought at the time, and I still think at the time, that the stormwater fund should be used for stormwater purposes, not to fund other deposit, other departments. So I would encourage the city council maybe to table this, take a look at it, sit down with Harry, find out where's that money really going. That's all I got. Thank you.
Adam, there seems to be a lot of confusion revolving around how this money is being sent, spent, and for why? Why isn't it just exclusively going to capital improvements? Can you expound on that and...
Sure. The, the allocation that Harry's talking about is paying for stormwater maintenance. It's just a matter of who's performing the maintenance. So if it's performed by members of a different department that are paid out of the general fund normally, there's an allocation made for the work that they do on stormwater.
Because stormwater has to be only stormwater, it can't be anything else.
That's right. So if those same crews went out and fixed a water main, so if someone from the street crew went out and fixed a water main, the water fund would have to reimburse the general fund for that work that was done by the street fund. It's, it's the same thing in this case.
So Adam, why is it that not all of the money that's collected by the stormwater fee going exclusively towards capital improvements to alleviate infrastructure inadequacies?
Well, as Harry mentioned, there's, in, in, any operation, utility operation, there's overhead and there's indirect costs. Okay? So not everything can go to capital. There has to be someone that directs the fund, the, you know, the collection of those funds, actually collects the funds, disperses the funds, hires the contractors to do the work, designs the work. So it would be impossible for the entire utility fee to go towards capital. If, if the utility is truly paying its own bill. I mean, just like you operate any, any business.
And how many employees does the utility fund?
It only funds one 100%.
Only funds one employee?
Right.
And what about the MS4 permit? Why do we need to have compliance to the MS4 permit?
Well, if we don't comply, then we can be penalized for that.
And as we stated before, the federal government has no funding, even though they mandate us to meet those requirements.
Correct.
And since it was instituted 10 years ago, has those requirements by the federal government increased their demands and what the city has to perform?
No, they haven't.
I thought last year that there was added...
They, we, we've done, we've re, we've done a recent renewal of our, our permit. It didn't really change our, affect our costs, really. We are still operating with, like, for example, no numeric threshold. Some communities have actual numeric thresholds they have to meet as far as their discharge, you know, how much, how much pollution can be in the water. Right now, we're just under a best management practice mandate, so that's a little different. If, if they started, if they came to us and found that we were not in compliance, that may open the door for numeric standards, and then it would be additional testing and cleaning and requirements that we'd have involved there. That's when, that's when you get their attention, is when you're not following those rules to begin with, which is why places like City of Colorado Springs got in trouble.
So we're just following the basic minimum requirements to keep our MS4 permit, and yet that, that accrues cost to our stormwater fund?
Absolutely, yeah.
What is your, tell me about the street sweeper.
So the street sweeper, I don't think we are allocating 100% of the street sweeper. A, a portion of it does go. Again, there were, there were functions, there were stormwater functions that the general fund was performing before the inception of the utility.
Any idea how much that was?
No idea, no. There were estimates at that time that they used to create the, the initial fee. But once the utility is created, all of those things that the general fund did or funded has to be transferred over to the utility.
Because utility has to be completely...
Right. The general fund can't perform, we can't use tax dollars to perform stormwater functions once we've created a utility that does the same function. That's like double dipping. So the, all those functions, so if, if a portion of the sw, the sweeper was for stormwater, that portion has to be then transferred and billed to the utility fund.
So, so what you're saying is that only a portion of the street sweeper is going towards the utility fund?
Right. In the current allocation, only a portion is, and then we'll see, we will see based on the consultant's analysis in a few weeks or so, what they think it should be.
In what situation does a street sweeper need to be utilized for stormwater?
Well, that's, that's part of the water quality aspect. It's picking up all the things in the curb and gutter and on the streets that aren't supposed to go down the storm drain.
Suspended particles.
So that's part of our MS4 permit. We're required, we're required to take care of our own stuff and clean up our own things and not discharge. So the street sweeper helps that.
Do you have any other questions about the utility fund?
I do, because that, it sounds like then that over 10 years ago, we were spending some portion of money for stormwater cleanup. And now that's grown, so we took that out of the city budget. Now the city can use that money that they were, had allocated for that for something else. And we've gone from whatever that amount was, which I remember someone say it was around 200,000 or a little less, and now it's gone to 900 and some thousand, 957,000.
Well, I think, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city actually has been, take the utility fund has been inadequate in providing the basic necessities and needs to meet our requirements. So the city from the general fund has been kind of supplementing the utility fund, and through this study, that recent study that was done, we found out that was in violation of Tabor and can no longer be done. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
So what...
So we're now spending a million dollars on stormwater cleanup a year? Is that what we're doing? That we weren't before, 10 years ago, we weren't spending but maybe 100,000 or a couple hundred thousand?
I, I don't know what we were spending before we formed the utility. I have no idea. But, but, but in the 1990s, when there was a culvert plug, the street crews went out and unplugged the culvert. Now, when they do that, that has to be charged to the utility. Where before, they, they just did it as a function of the, of the, of their job as a street crew that was paid through the general fund.
I don't know.
We can, we can dig deeper into how that money's spent.
I mean, and it doesn't, and it doesn't really matter. I mean, the, the, our capital improvement costs, our capital improvement plan, which hasn't changed, you've heard people testify that tonight, it hasn't changed because nothing's been done with a good portion of the capital improvement plan, but the cost of that is increasing every day. I mean, it, it was 2014 when we finished our mitigation plan, it was 55 million. Now, because of inflation, it's 75 million.
So our utility fund's collecting some money, you know, usually around a 180,000 dollars a year or 300,000 dollars a year for capital funds?
Right.
But we have multimillion dollar projects. That's another problem.
Right. So historically, we've collected capital funds, and we've banked it until we had a big, a big enough pot to build something.
And so that takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
And for example, was at the North Basin, where we were able to garner $4 million from state grants to go towards some basin work to be done towards stormwater. The problem was that when the, the bid came in to do the work, it came in at 12 million dollars, meaning this, the utility fund independently needed to provide 8 million dollars to, to do that project.
Right.
When we're collecting 180 to 300,000 dollars a year toward capital improvements, that's just not ever gonna happen.
Right.
So, so our problem is way beyond 1 million dollars a year.
Hello? I, I don't know, I don't know where to go with it from here.
Let me, yes, go ahead, go ahead.
One point that, that I don't know, got communicated truly, but there's been some of us that have had concern about the interfund transfers and how that actually gets calculated. And Tony can expand on this, but we're, we're in the process of, of having an independent consultant look at the formulas that are being used and, and actually interviewing those employees to, to try to determine if those percentages and calculations are in fact correct. So we are in fact looking at how we're calculating those funds, and that study, I'm understanding, is hopefully gonna be done soon.
Yeah, in fact, we've seen the preliminary results, and what they reflect is that the city has not been charging the stormwater fund sufficiently, that the general fund is continuing to oversubsidize that fund to 10 of about 180,000 dollars, in addition to what it currently, this transfer here is 620,000, add to that. So, so it only validates the work that Harry has previously done, and as we warn, be careful what you wish for, because in this case, they're telling us that we're continuing to use the general fund to subsidize a separate distinct legal entity called the stormwater utility.
So we, we are looking...
Under Tabor, that's not appropriate.
We're looking at that formula to try to see if, if that's right and, and adjust, and whether we gotta go down or up.
The numbers don't lie.
Preliminary numbers shows about 770,000 instead of 620, what we are charging. So you will see the result is our, our records is very conservative than the consultant would come up with.
Unfortunately, you know, about 85% of our annual expenditures are for operations and maintenance, and people can poo-poo that, but that's the fact. That's what it costs to maintain that level of infrastructure. It's much like our roads. They don't get fixed or maintained for free. Work has to be done on a, on a regular basis to maintain them. But as a result, we're not saving sufficient money or generating sufficient money to make the capital investments. It's very analogous to our road situation, where three times, the public was asked to raise money for improving the roads over 20 years. They rejected it each time. Well, the net effect was, we're now having to spend not to overlay our roads, but to reconstruct our roads. Difference between a cavity and a root canal. And the cost difference is, to overlay this, a, a, a center lane model of road is about 400,000 dollars. We're reconstructing these roads at a cost of 1.8 million. So this is what happens when you keep kicking the can down the road. The costs get exorbitant, to the point where, talk to Colorado Springs, they went down the same path. The, the voters there rejected the stormwater fee in 2005. They actually voted to restrict the city from using any general funds for stormwater between 2009 and 14 until the EPA, the federal government, and Pueblo County came after them. And now they have a consent decree where they're required to spend over the next 20 years, 420 million dollars. So, you know, there's a consequence for no action, we're not just recognizing, no one likes fees, no one likes costs, but it's much cheaper to do it right the first time than kicking the can down the road.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Any other questions? Who's next? Mr. Turner, former mayor, did a lot for stormwater.
My name is George Turner. I live at 1514 Vine Street here in Canyon City. I'd kind of like to build on what Tony just said. Somebody earlier in the evening said that for 50 years, the city has been putting off any improvements to, for, for stormwater. That's not true. It's been more like 150 years, and the city has been utilizing the irrigation ditches in this community for about 150 years as its stormwater utility. We learned a number of years ago that in order for the city to do that, they were guilty of trespassing. And I heard that the hydraulic ditch company has increased their assessment by $2 a share. I'm secretary treasurer of the Canyon City North Creek Ditch Company. We increased our assessment by $5 a share, and the sole purpose of that is to generate a fund with which to hire water attorneys to sue the city if we have to. And so that's how I want to start. Now I want to tell you about me. I own enough property in Canyon City that any water that falls on any impervious surface that I have never leaves my property, and yet I still have to pay a stormwater utility The city drains its water off of Vine Street down my driveway, so I have to accept stormwater from the city. At the same time, they charge me a stormwater utility fee for water that... for water that never leaves my property. And you've all heard this story before, but I have a, a lot. It's a little over an acre. It had an old house on it. I tore it down and, just to make the city look better. Uh, there's a small piece of, of concrete that was left on that property. Apparently it's by about 10 by 12 feet. Because I'm being assessed on 120 square feet of impervious surface on that lot. I was receiving a bill from the city, uh, every quarter for 66 cents for my stormwater utility fee on that piece of concrete. And now that the city has gone to, uh, billing on a monthly basis, I received last week, a bill from the city for 22 cents for, uh, the stormwater utility fee on that piece of concrete. Uh, I ran into the mayor outside the city hall here as I came down to pay my, my fee. I asked him, what does it cost to send that bill? And he said, uh, a dollar. And I'm saying, the city spends a dollar to bill me 22 cents? And, uh, that doesn't make any sense to me. Now I did go down and talk to Harry. And thank you, Harry. I appreciate your, uh, listening to me. I had assumed that because the city now has this kind of, in my opinion, complicated billing system where the bills are, if I get this right, Harry, are generated here at city hall. And then the information is sent to someplace down in Texas.
Other side.
Pardon?
Yes.
Yes, someplace down in Texas. Subsequently, it winds up in Denver and the bills are sent to us from someplace in Denver. And I said, man, that doesn't make any sense. Harry explained to me that that's more, uh, cost effective than the extra person that was hired to help with the billing uh, that was, uh, done away with by this city when they went to this present system. So, uh, thank you, Harry. I'm glad to know that. But, uh, it seems like a complicated system. My house is built in two floodplains. It's in the Red Canyon Draw floodplain and it's in the, the Arkansas River floodplain. My house, well, my family has owned the property for 108 years. And my property has never been flooded with the exception of one time when, uh, Bob Solomon, who was city engineer at the time, put a grate in the, uh, the, the floodway that comes down, hmm, through, what, anyway. It eventually winds up coming down Frasier Avenue where it's encased and goes to the river. And, uh, and Bob put a, a grate in that, that pipe as it goes under Frasier Avenue. I came home from work one evening and the whole area was underwater. And it was because all the trash that had come down with the first flood that they'd had in the ditch plugged the grate and backed all the water up and flooded the area. He, he had a backhoe come down and he took the grate out and the flooding was stopped. Anyway, in, in my opinion, the city is, uh, they need to refine, I think, their stormwater utility situation before they start doubling the fee. And I, I guess I've always been bothered by the fact that, uh, the people talk like, if you live in the city, you don't live in the county. Yes, you do. You live in the county and you live in the city. And you get to pay taxes to the county as well as the city. And, but nobody seems to talk about that.
That's what we're trying to do.
I'm sorry?
That's what we're trying to do. And people understand that that.
It's my understanding that, that you are meeting with the county.
Right.
To try to get them to.
Right.
Become involved in this. Well.
Need your help.
Pardon?
Need everybody's help to do that.
Yeah.
All the citizens need to do that.
I agree. But that needs to happen before you start.
Well.
Setting a fee, which is.
Got people talking.
I hope so.
We do.
Okay, well, I guess that's about all I've got to say, but I, uh, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Mayor. Because, uh, I think that that needs to be accomplished before you start setting any fees. And the county surely will be drawn into this because of, when somebody said, uh, the 4 million dollars that they used to have to expend on sheriff's department, they don't have to spend that anymore. So they must have some money that they could.
I don't know.
Anyway.
But I think that all citizens sitting here, and I'm glad you came, you need to be involved in that. Got your attention. How else are we going to do it?
Thank you.
There's seven of us. We're trying hard to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Norton?
Ed Norton, 2514 North Fifth Street. I wasn't going to speak, but I was rather intrigued by the conversation that Dave Reynolds was having in the exchange up here. Uh, just a footnote before I get that, I was also listening to Guy Bani talking about, uh, the flooding of the WPA ditch and, and Dan Bricksy's thoughts about the 91 flood and the 92 flood. And he forgot the 96 flood, which, uh, brought in, uh, six inches of water into the radio station. But it wasn't until the city was putting two inches of, uh, asphalt on Central Avenue a few years ago that it took my neighbor Guy Bani to remind me that the city was raising the level of the dam. Because raising the level of Central Avenue by two inches was raising the height of the dam that dams the water on the north side of Central Avenue. And it's like, wow, he's right, as if the water wasn't bad enough before. But in listening to Dave Reynolds and somewhere in that conversation, it was talked about the flooding, uh, and the shifting maintenance dollars to different utility departments and the street department having to fix flooding issues in Dawson Ranch. And I'm wondering how much money is shifted because Dawson Ranch is an inherent flood risk every time, not even a significant rainfall event. If you have a half inch to three quarter inches of water, you're getting flooding. So how much money is shifted from this stormwater fund to the street department to deal with Dawson Ranch flooding on city streets up there? And I point out, that was an issue that the city created by not requiring curb and gutter throughout the Dawson Ranch subdivision when that was approved.
Well, let's point out that when there is small storm bursts, that the flooding isn't just in Dawson Ranch. It is everywhere in Canyon City, especially in East Canyon City, around the Humane Society in that area. It's quite severe, much more severe than at Dawson Ranch.
But, but it was mentioned earlier that, that the maintenance pays for cleaning up the streets during flooding in Dawson Ranch. I was just wondering how much, how those dollars look like on an annual basis?
I don't know. We did an analysis a number of years ago when Dawson Ranch residents thought we weren't spending enough and we were able to show them that we were. I can tell you that. But we, we do spend a fair amount of time up in Dawson Ranch.
Adam, is your mic on?
It is now.
All right. Okay. I, I just, I thought Dave made a great point that if you're going to look at these numbers, look at, look at all of that and see where some of those, uh, maintenance dollars for stormwater is going.
Good. Thank you, Ed. Anybody else? Would you like to come back, Mr. Weed, for a short discussion? You've got one minute.
I think I can do it. Yeah, this, um, discussion about, you know, this allocation of, uh, stormwater dollars to the different departments and things, um, Canyon City's not naive and we've had a stormwa, we've had a utility for a very long time, the, the water facility. Okay? And for 11 years, uh, this city and its staff and its council, uh, was, is fully aware of the expenses that can and must be charged to a utility and ones that don't have to be. And I'm, I'm going to take massive exception with this, uh, the comments that have been made that these fees have to be charged to the stormwater. I mean, this, this city is not naive. They were aware of those requirements all, every year that this, uh, stormwater fee has been in place. And it's never, uh, none of those charges were transferred, uh, through cost allocations to other departments. And, uh, to me, it looks like it was just a, we'll call it a land grab, a money grab to free up some money in the general fund. It's, uh, I, those fees have been paid by, you know, this stormwater, it's maintenance stuff. That's what, that's what it is. And it's been historically and routinely and knowingly paid for, uh, out of the general fund. And, uh, this, this, uh, last minute, uh, decision to raid the stormwater fee to, to pay those fees, I think is wrong.
Harry, how many years have we been doing the cost allocations to, from the general fund to the stormwater?
Ever, ever since we started the, uh, stormwater utility.
For 10 years.
Since 2006.
Since 2006, the cost allocations have occurred from the general fund into the stormwater. Can you show us documentation of that?
Yes.
Sure, sure.
Were, were those in council-approved budgets?
Yes.
And they're on audited statements to.
Audited and, uh, budget was approved by the city council.
Mayor?
Okay.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to do this, but based on all the comments that we've had from everybody, I think we need to look at continuing this project. But sooner or later, we can't keep coming back, looking at it. Somebody says something, we look at it again, revise it. I don't have a problem with us continuing this so it can be looked at. But folks, we're going to have to face it sooner or later. So if we continue, let's look at resolving some of the questions that were brought up. So we don't have to go through this again and again and again.
Okay. What if the council want to make a comment before I make a comment?
I'd like to make one.
Go ahead.
With this proposal, we're talking about just doing increases to make our, our funds match. And we're not including repairs in any of this allocation. And I feel like that's what our community is looking for, is, is to find a complete solution to this. And I don't feel like we've come up with that yet. And until we can, can look further into the future and, and decide how we're going to fix this completely, then I don't think we need to be making any decisions right now.
Just as a point of information, the current fee would cover the cost of $4 million in additional capital out of a $75 million backlog. So you're right, it hardly scratches the surface, doesn't really get us further down the road. But to put it, I know we've been using percentages, but to put it in real terms, what it, what this represents, the average household with approximately 3,600 square feet of impervious service, it works out to 19 cents a day. And for business, the average business is 19,000 square, square feet of impervious service. It works out to $1.12 per day. And if we were going to meet the entire capital needs, the rate would have to increase in excess of 1,000 percent.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Meisner?
I've got a question. I, I thought, I was under the impression that we had directed staff to bring us back a rate that would get the fund to a break even status.
That's what this does.
But you're talking about a $4 million.
Well, it's a capital investment over the time, but the vast majority of the fee is to cover operating and maintenance expenses.
What period of time do you say it'll take to accrue the $4 million for capital improvements? Is that through 2022?
That's 10 years.
The 10 years.
10 years.
10 years.
Yeah.
So it basically puts us back into the scenario that we started with, saving a little bit of capital each year.
Yeah.
Just gets our, kind of our nose above the water line.
And I think that's something important to say from ground zero. So this fee was started about 10 years ago. And the cost, you know, the, the fee has remained the same for that 10 years. But the cost to perform the same services has gone up with inflation.
Right. We did have some small increase, but, but yeah, you're right. The cost has gone up, but the fees haven't.
Mr. Linder, you had a, you're, are you fanning yourself or you? Could you come up here, the microphone? I have great ears, but a lot of these council people, they don't.
That's me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a comment, um, and it's not really a solution, um, but I know that when we elected the 1% increase for, um, streets, schools, uh, which I voted for, to be very honest, because I felt that we need it. And I think we do need it for storm runoff as well. Uh, Tony, how long is it going to take to pave the streets in Canyon City the way that they stand right now? How many years?
We have s- 66% of the streets are in fail or poor condition. To, to reconstruct them would cost 118 million dollars.
Yeah. Well, where I'm going with this a little bit is, uh, you have to maintain your streets and this and that, and it's a lot of money to do that. I was a little flabbergasted on when we did the tax increase like, and we left out the motels and that type of thing, why that didn't pass. It doesn't really affect me one way or the other. But that type of money, uh, from all the tourists coming into Canyon City, they, they do part of the problem that we have as far as rain runoff and this and that. So my thought would be, you know, that, uh, some of that tax, if it would have been voted in, would have paid for some of this problem, so to speak. Or when we get through paying for something, then, then tackle something differently. But, uh, I don't know exactly how you do it, other than a tax, if you're going to, if you're going to have everybody contribute, you know, whether, everybody that's in Fremont County and coming into Fremont County, you know, if it was just a small percentage, and I'm the one that gets hurt the worst.
Yeah.
Cause I sell a big ticket item.
Sure.
But if you had like a eighth of a percent or a quarter of a percent, something little just to break even or whatever, I think that that would take care of your, part of your problem. I don't know. It won't take care of all of it.
No, you have a valid concern. We need to put you in charge of our lodging tax because in 2016, the last total figures, visitors spent 67 million dollars in Fremont County and that generated 2.5 million in taxes for the county and the city. So if you want to avoid paying local taxes, have the visitor pay for it, and they will. But we got to attract them here. We got to brand and market and bring them here. But unfortunately, the people, I can't explain it either, why they would reject a tax that they didn't pay. We have to go back and educate and make it clear.
I'm not for raising taxes, but I don't know how you do it any other way.
Better to be on a visitor than, than a resident or local business. Cause they're going to subsidize our revenue streams.
Well, might as well let them help pay the bill because they're doing it now anyway.
Exactly.
Uh, doing different things. Just a comment, that's all.
Thanks, Steve. Any other comments from council?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Deli.
How long would it take us to put together a special district in order to, um, I'm, I'm not sure who to ask this question to.
I mean, we could put it together this year. It could be on the ballot in November. But it does require the consent and approval of the county commission. They have to approve the service plan.
And I think, I've been very active in the stormwater coalition and the discussions with the county. And I, I definitely sense that they want to proceed very cautiously towards a utility or an enterprise for stormwater. They want to analyze it very carefully. And I think from the feedback from the audience, everything needs to be done very carefully and, and purposefully. I think best case scenario would probably be two years. Best case scenario. Like we said, it, it'll only be possible if, one, we can formulate a, a good plan. And number two, county commissioners have to approve that plan in order for it to go into the ballot. And then once it is on the ballot, then our. to go into the ballot. And then once it is on the ballot, then our residents and those including in the county who would be affected by this vote, or this enterprise fund, would have to vote in favor of it, of the plan that we put into place. And then it needs to be executed. And not only executed, but then the funds have to start to be collected over a period of time. And so we're looking at this enterprise fund, we're looking at that being a very, a long-term solution. Whereas right now, day to day with short storm bursts, we're having flooding that is happening. We've said over and over again, folks saying that they're getting flooded. Everywhere I go, folks are upset that they're flooded. North, south, east, west, it doesn't matter. They're getting flooded and they're pretty angry about it.
Would it help to raise the stormwater fees less significantly? It would make a dent, wouldn't it?
Something's always better than nothing. We could potentially take out the capital component and recalculate the fee just to cover operating and maintenance and at least eliminate the deficit situation we're in. Um, so that's a positive step in the right direction.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Meisner?
Dolly, just background, after months and months of this, I was under the impression that it was the direction of council, understanding that the plan that Ms. Smith laid out, that we're looking at two years potentially before we have a solution, under the assumption that the county commissioners give us their blessing. So as a short-term plan, our, I understood our direction was to staff, give us a rate increase that will give us a break even point only. Now, if this particular rate is not a break even point, then we need to adjust it. But our, I understood our direction was to give us a break even point because that's where we need to get to. And then, once we move forward with the, with the district, then we can evaluate what the rate needs to be for everybody. If this rate, I'm understanding here, and I've asked this twice, you've mentioned the $4 million, but I'm in favor of getting a rate that's gonna get that plan back to black and white, or back to a black situation. Nothing more than that. And if we can achieve that, we're making some progress towards the big monster. It has to be done somewhere. We can't continue to fund this enterprise fund through the general fund.
Were you surprised to see that it doubled?
No. Given the information that we were given from council, I mean, from staff and the, um...
The consultant?
The consultant, we were, we're anticipating a rate somewhere in that range, up to a doubling figure. Exactly what it was gonna be, we didn't know. Again, I'm in favor of a rate that's gonna get us to a operational in the black and cut it there. If, if that's not at $13, but at 10.50, then I, then I would support that.
We can calculate that.
So I'm kinda getting a sense that maybe we do need to have a little bit more discussion before we move forward with a vote. I do want to stress very strongly that, as I, as I've heard from many of you, even many previous leaders in our community, that there is a serious problem in Canyon City with stormwater. I think we all recognize that. But we all are gonna have to pay a price for that. And, and it hurts, and it's horrible, and we don't like it. But something has to be done. Not only to meet our, as the basic requirements for MSF from it, but now, I already knew we had one lawsuit impending, now potentially two lawsuits impending. And so this goes beyond just the typical frustration of residents, but it's starting to go into, um, into, to lawsuit mode. It's something that we need to show that we are going to actually have some progress made. Getting into the black is gonna be one step forward. Waiting until a utility fund comes, that's just kicking it down the road even longer and longer because we don't know what that future's gonna be. But we do know the future right now is that we are in debt and we are hurting in the stormwater department.
Okay. Any more discussion? Anybody out there want to say anything?
I've said enough.
Yes, sir.
Um, please?
No, you need to come up to the microphone, please. Name and address.
Carl Zupan, 29 Pipe View, Dawson Ranch.
You said Carl?
What's that?
What was your name? Carl?
Carl, Carl Zupan.
Carl, okay.
I'd just like to say on a form I've already pulled up here, that I think we already pay more storm tax than any other town in this state. Colorado Springs, when they re-passed theirs last year, they were paying $15 a quarter. I'm already paying 43. Under your proposal, it'll go to 86. My neighbor over here is already 60, so his would go to about 120. Denver's, Denver's right around $30 a quarter. So is Pueblo. There are no fees in Durango and Montrose. So I don't understand why they keep saying, why is it some cities pay it and some cities don't?
Not all cities have an enterprise.
And most of them ha- most of them have it attached to their sewer bill, not their water bill. So they don't have, you know, the city coming around and turning their water off if they can't pay it or don't pay it, which is, um, a little bit over the top as far as keeping people from having water when they've paid the water bill.
I'm guessing if it's through the sewer, um, through their sewer bill, that their stormwater is attached to the sewer enterprise fund. That's, we, we actually asked the Fremont Sanitation if they would take on stormwater as an enterprise fund, and they, they declined based on the complications that it has.
But how can you justify turning somebody's water off when they pay the water bill but not the stormwater fee? I mean, that, that's just not right.
Well, you can't pay one and not the other.
Huh?
You can't pay one and not the other, you get one bill. What are you talking about?
No, I'm just saying if you...
Well, I'm saying the same thing.
If you allocated your money when you paid it, that I'm paying for my water but not the stormwater fee. I mean, Colorado Springs used to put a lien on people's houses and then they could get it when they died if they wanted it. But I mean, they just re-passed that a year and a half ago or so, and it's $15 a quarter.
The, the difference is...
Why is ours so much more?
They got a million people.
Explain very simply, when you allocate the cost, in Colorado Springs, it's allocated over 180,000 homes. Our costs are allocated over 5,400. So it's a question of proportion, just like Denver. When you have that many more homes, you get to spread your costs like peanut butter, real thin.
Yeah, they have that much more square miles to cover too, but...
Well, just look at the capital expense, it's disproportionate. We, we have 75 million, they have 460,000, and yet, you know, we're only 3% of their households, we're probably about 20% of their capital needs. So our capital costs are disproportionate because we haven't done anything as, uh, our great historian had just mentioned, over the course of 150 years. That's the consequence.
I'd also like to point out, the median income of all these other towns, Canyon City is the lowest.
Correct.
And yet we've got the highest amount for the stormwater tax. And another thing that's always irritated me about it, period, was that when people get flooded out, it's usually off the city streets. And then you, they don't help anybody that does get flooded with this stormwater fee. And they don't go in and fix the problem, whether it be curb and gutter or whatever. One of my neighbors, three and a half years ago, the big storm at Dawson, little pipe like this under the street that should have been three or four feet tall, flooded out, it came up over the street, flooded out his yard, $11,000 worth of damage, and he had to eat all of that.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Go ahead, go ahead.
What's your proposed solution to this then? What kind of idea do you have?
I don't have a solution. I'm just saying we already pay more than everybody else. And now you're wanting to double it. It's just, it's ridiculous. And our property tax...
Have you heard, I'm not a proponent of doubling it.
My property tax just went up $200 this year for the school bill that went through.
But like I said, we're faced with a problem. And man, I tell you, if you had a solution for it, we're all ears. We're all ears. I mean, yes, we identified a problem, and we're trying to come up with a solution. And you come up and say, this isn't fair, this isn't fair. So I think it's fair to ask you, do you have a solution or, or a part of a solution that would help us with this?
No, I don't have a solution. I mean, if you need more...
Okay, so we're supposed to come up with one and you don't have one.
If you need more money, I mean, just charge, charge everybody five or $10 more, but don't double their, their fee.
That's what we were just talking about, bringing down a number. And then getting the district together, find out how many players there are, and then exactly what it would cost to maintain and then also make improvements. So I think we're headed in the right direction.
I mean, my last water bill was $320, and only half of that was for the water.
Okay. Mine was $55 last month.
Because it, you know, they charge us a hundred, they charge us 120 every quarter to pump it up the hill, and another $30 for a meter fee.
Okay, we're getting off track here.
Okay.
Mr. Meisner, go ahead.
Um, just, Mr. Zupan, uh, I would at least refer him to the study that we did, that we contracted with the city that shows that the Canyon City rate, in terms of how they formulated all these rates, was $20.50. The rate for Longmont was $39.15. The rate for Boulder was $45.36. The rate for Denver was $38.54. And the rate for Fort Collins was, um, $52.53, or 23 cents. Point is, out of all those rates that they used in the survey for stormwater, Canyon City was almost 50% of the lowest rate.
True. Another significant issue is property tax, which is historically the largest expense any resident pays. We represent 4% of your tax bill. I think that is the lowest in the state, I mean, on a proportional basis. 75% goes to the school district and the fire district. We actually pay, in Canyon City, less for city services than we pay for the parks and rec district.
Right. Look on your tax bill. Okay, any other comments from Ms. Bany? Would you like to come to the mic? And we're gonna wrap up.
Thank you. Shirley Bany, 1627 Central, and also business owner in this Canyon City. I would like to defer my three minutes to Dennis Wade. Thank you.
Round three.
And I'm not gonna, I, I, I am...
Dennis, you said you could keep it 1:00 to 1:00. Who has to play it?
Okay, this'll be one. I, I'm really confused about why we need to double the fee to get to the break even point. Um, last year, we collected $792,000 in stormwater fees. And the cost allocation that they did, the interdepartmental cost allocation that they did last year was somewhere in the ballpark of $600,000. I mean, the way I see it, the stormwater fund is plus 192,000. I don't see, I don't, I, I don't see where it's even in the negative, much less why you have to double it. It's, it's in the black already. The entire cost allocation that was deferred to the stormwater fund was $600,000, and it collected 800,000. Where's the problem?
Well, I think there's that 4 million that we just identified. That could be, that could be the difference between that 800...
Capital improvements over the next 10 years.
Well, no, you're just talking about, that's capital, you're talking about breaking even. Just breaking even until we find a solution to the problem. You're already ahead of breaking even by $200,000.
You're also not looking at the reserves. The reserves, we've been, we've been pulling out of the reserves to balance.
City has...
We'll recalculate, it will be a reduction.
I think what we need, administrator and mayor, let's have another meeting. I'd like to see a really in-depth analysis of spending and allocations and requirements, and also a state of our future plans of where we're heading towards the future, and also proposed projects. I don't know if our market, if our study analysis will be ready by then or not, but proposed plans, that'll be ahead in the future that we are looking at doing, and what those would cost and what it would look like.
Great opportunity to meet our independent cost allocator.
And then that could give us an, an opportunity also to see some alternative numbers just to stay in the black.
Mm-hmm.
And so I would like to motion, Mayor...
Bring you back that in a couple weeks.
Okay.
That we table it until that time that we have that prepared for the future.
I'll just reiterate, the estimated cost allocation, which I think was grossly over-exaggerated, was $600,000, and that was fully charged to the stormwater fund. And the stormwater fund had revenues of 792,000. It's in the black.
You made your three minutes.
Yep.
You made it.
That's just a...
I would entertain a motion. Uh, well, let me just say something here. I'm, I'm glad you came out on this, this bad day. Cold, snowy. Don't lose your momentum. This council's not gonna kick it down the road. The other councils have, and mayors, quite frankly, they have. They've not done you a service at all. We're going to. You need to talk to the people. We're in the county. You need to encourage them to get on board and get a district started from the drainage basins that are coming down into our town. We happen to be in Fremont County. Don't give up on that. You need to do that. Mr. Bricksy, then I'm gonna entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanna say I do take a little bit of an exception to what you said.
Okay.
These councils have not done you a service. Uh, I believe if you'll look, it wasn't an enterprise until 2006, 2007, when that council stood up and took that. So I have to make an exception to what you said.
Thank you. You corrected me. Thank you, Mr. Bricksy. I entertain a motion then?
I thought I made that earlier, that we continue this.
And I thought I did too.
I thought I made that about a half hour ago.
Is that a motion? Was that a motion?
Yes, I made it a half hour ago.
I think it was yesterday.
But you're gonna table it.
I'll second that motion.
What's the motion?
What's the motion?
We're tabling it till a future meeting where we can do more in-depth analysis and study.
It needs to be tabled to a date certain time.
What, what timeframe do we need?
I would probably think, either your next general government meeting, we could have this available, so it could be an open discussion.
And we've had...
March 7?
Well, we've had, we've had, we'll have had a stormwater task force meeting between then, I think.
Okay, I'm, I'll add March 7. That's the next general government meeting.
General government meeting on March 7, that starts at 4:00 PM.
Okay, remember, I, I signed a tolling agreement, which gives us time where they will not sue us.
Yeah.
Well, that's with the hydraulic ditch company. We have two years in time, Miss Tipping.
We also, Mr. Turner's collecting more fun too.
That's right.
So...
I have him have the motion in March 7.
Right. Okay, would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Hockes?
Yes.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Aye, approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, let's go down to 13 and get this ordinance out of the way.
Word 11.
Word 11?
Yeah, 11. Yeah, we're close.
Well, I don't wanna do that one yet. I wanna do 13 because we have, we have city employees sitting here just waiting and listening to this. So let's go, pardon? Well, it's not fair to them to have to sit here and listen to all that. Okay, let's go to 13, which is ordinance number eight, series 2018. This is the first reading. It's an ordinance amending the sales tax code. I will need three to introduce it. Mr. Arcas, Ms. Dolly, and, uh, so Hammerick, uh, would you read by title, please?
For the last four years.
Okay, let's try and keep it quiet. We're trying to do business here, okay? Thank you.
This is the bill for ordinance number eight, series of 2018, and ordinance repealing and reenacting section 3.1, 2.030, 3.12.0, 3.12.030, and 3.12.20220, amending sections 3.12.170, 3.12.210, 3.12.340, adding a new section 3.12.455 to chapter 3.12, and repealing sections 3.12.320. All of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Sales and Use Tax Definitions and Administration Collection and Unfortunate of the City's Sales Tax and Use Tax.
Could we have a report from the city attorney, please?
Sure. So, um, as we discussed at the last, um, general government meeting, I believe, uh, this is the implementation of CML's, um, sales tax definition, actually, sales and use tax definition standardization project in order to avoid the Colorado legislature imposing a standardized sales tax on home rural municipalities like Canyon City. Um, that's the big component of the change. Um, while discussing this with staff, we've made some clarification, procedural clarifications regarding, um, use and sales tax. Um, the memo, I think, lays that out for you. Um, I'll, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And, sorry, just one more thing. This has not changed the items that are taxable within the city. Everything remains the same, and there's no tax, there's no, um, tax policy change under taper, requiring an election.
Okay. Did we correct the neat cattle or the meat cattle?
It's actually neat cattle. That's the correct term. Yep. It's a reference to the type of cattle.
Well, what's an unneat cattle then?
Excuse me?
Is it, what's the, what's the counter to that? A disheveled cattle?
I don't think it's neat as in well put together, but...
Okay. Mr. Meisner?
Um, Ms. Attorney?
Yes?
If we adopt this ordinance, then do we have to worry about the state imposing guidelines on us later, potentially? Or is, I mean, can the state still come back and say, um, everybody didn't do this, so you have to still do this?
It's possible.
Okay.
Um, I think Harry and I counted, there's 27 home rural municipalities that have already adopted this. So we...
adopted this, so it will be number twenty-eight.
Out of how many?
Sixty-nine.
Say sixty-seven.
So, we're not halfway.
No, but it has, how long have you been working on this? Nine months?
Right. About nine months.
So, it takes everybody a little while.
Okay. Thank you.
You're saying local governance takes a while?
I'm saying sales tax definitions take a while.
It is, and I have to say, thank you all from the finance department for your hard work on this, yours.
Yeah, we are working since two thousand and fourteen, actually.
Oh, yeah, that was round one. That was before my time.
Okay, where are we? Any comments from the audience? This taxing issue?
It's warmed down.
Any further comments or questions from council? Good. Motion, I don't need, I'm sorry. I'll need a mo...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move that we approve ordinance number eight, series of two thousand and eighteen, upon the first reading.
Second.
I mean, second? Are there any discussions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, and finally, it's number eleven. It's approval of the city Canyon City Business Plan. Could we report from the administrator?
Simply, Mayor, this operationalizes the council's strategic plan, creates tactics for two thousand and eighteen, and, most importantly, includes the comments you made at the last meeting to ensure that we're having factual responses to social media, and we're providing two business days versus forty-eight hours to respond to phone calls. So, we've included those in this, and this will give us the direction we so vitally need for the next ten months.
Any comments or questions from council?
Just again, a thank you to staff, Ryan Stevens, shout out to, and city administrator Tony, thank you for your hard work on this. We really appreciate having a clear plan with trackable goals for us to try and achieve and meet, and just reinforce that this is based on citizen feedback and community needs. It's a way to hold ourselves and our staff accountable.
Very good. Thank you. I need a motion and a second from council. Ms. Gonzalez?
Mayor and council, I make a motion to approve ordinance number seven, series of two thousand and eighteen.
No, it's the city business plan.
Oh, the city business plan.
Thank you.
Sorry. Do I need to say it again?
Yes, you do.
I make a motion that we approve the city business, Canyon City, city.
Canyon City Business, thank you. Second, Mr. Gill. Any discussion on that motion? Call a roll, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.